I'd like to call the January 30th Board of Education meeting to order. We could take a moment of silence. Black swan. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the Board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Seidowitz? Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Here.
Mr. Lippi?
Here.
Mrs. Markward?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Raccano?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
At this moment, Tara, Mrs. Raccano, can you motion for executive session?
I move to approve the following resolution, that the Board immediately go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes for the purpose of conducting a grievance hearing. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be back in approximately 30 minutes. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Markward?
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Lippi?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Raccano?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo? Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
At this time, Mrs. Raccano, can you make a motion to go back into executive session?
I move at 7:16 to return to executive session for the purpose of grievances for an additional 30 minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll be back in about 30 minutes. Thank you, welcome back. And, Mr. Schultz, roll call, please.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Here.
Mr. Lippi?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Markward?
Here.
Mrs. Raccano?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Fenari, the interim superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. And we're sorry for keeping those of you who have been waiting patiently waiting. There are a couple of things on the agenda tonight that are celebratory in nature. And the first is, we'd like to offer some congratulations. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize this year's recipient of the Passaic County Unsung Heroes Award. This award goes to one 12th grade student at each high school in Passaic County who make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities, but who are often overlooked by traditional recognition programs. Selection criteria may include students who have overcome difficult academic or personal challenges, modelled good citizenship, or exhibit a spirit and quiet strength that inspires others. This award is given to students who make their school districts better places and inspire others in the school community. As West Milford High School counselors and administrators discussed the candidates for this year's recipient, they brought out one particular student who we're going to honor here this evening, Michael McCloskey. Michael began his time in the West Milford Township Public Schools in special programming through elementary, middle, and high school. Michael has grown tremendously in academic achievements and personally. Michael is a student leader in every sense of the word. He is captain of several varsity teams and just won the Passaic County Bowling Championship. He is described as a standout bowler and runner and excels in Special Olympics. At the high school's recent onsite admission day, Michael received acceptances to William Patterson University and Seton Hall University. He is our 2024 Passaic County Unsung Hero. Michael and his parents have been invited to attend an award ceremony to be held in March of 2024. This evening, however, I'm proud to present Michael with a certificate of recognition from the West Milford Township Public Schools for his attaining this county level honor. Michael, please come up and accept your certificate and come to the table, as I know the board members would like to congratulate you personally. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite Aiden McKimberick up to the microphone to present his proposal for an Eagle Scout project at Maple Road School.
I noticed that, Mr. Lippi. Uh, did some work, huh? All right, hello. I can do that. All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Aiden Simberick. I'm from Troop 159. And I'd like to propose my Eagle Scout project. Essentially, what I'm planning to do is I'm going to make a new podium for Maple Road School for any activities after school, any after-school activities, anything like that. And what I'm also going to do is currently, the after-school program held in the media center, there had a door to the main walkway, but there's nothing there. It's just dirt. And obviously, in winter times, it gets muddy. It gets really bad. And my idea is I'm going to make a pathway going over that area with different stepping stones on it. But the entire idea is on those stepping stones, there's going to be different STEM quotes and engravings into the stones to try and get them intrigued in STEM, because I personally go to DCL STEM. Maybe they find a career path something they're interested in. And so, yeah. That's my idea. Any questions?
Are you building the podium or are you just purchasing it?
I'm going to be building the podium. And just, I know it's like winter time. We're not going to be digging anything. It's going to be all placed on top and it's going to be rebarred in. So there's no digging required.
Aiden, could you tell us a little bit about the, you know, you gave us, in the packet that you submitted, you gave us some diagrams and things. Could you tell us how you came up with your concept drawings?
Basically, a couple weeks back, I went to the place and threw the help some scout masters, you know me, over there. Basically, we came, the idea is that we're going to build it using two-by-fours on each side. And we're going to use gravel in the middle and then slay it all with the stepping stones. That's very basic. There were going to be more to it, obviously. Is that the answer to your question? All right.
I have a question. What materials are you using for stepping stones? Are you using, you know, slate? Gravel, papers?
For the stepping stones, I believe they're going to be slate.
And just so that the Board is aware, before Mr. Schultz and our new facilities manager, Mr. Glenn will have already been reviewing the documents and will be, you know, working with Aiden to make sure that the project is installed, you know, properly and well. And we're so appreciative. Sorry.
And how are you going to pay for this? Are you going to ask for funds, materials, fundraising?
Basically, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start a GoFundMe. Normally, with scout, like Eagle projects in this town, normally they got a lot of money. But also, I'm looking into nations. I actually have a company already really intrigued in this and planning to donate a lot of the resources available.
Oh, awesome, awesome. Well, when you get that GoFundMe or anything set up, just make sure, you know, you include the district on that.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Will.
It's okay. I don't know if you know me. I'm Mr. C of Troop 44. And I've been through a lot of these proposals before. So pardon me if I beat it up a little bit. I don't see any preliminary costs in your project proposal. Do you have any breakdown of that?
Not of yet, I believe.
And in terms of supplies?
Sorry. I do. I just, it's not on that doc.
Okay. In terms of supplies, it... Oftentimes, I have scouts that don't read the little blurb next to the section. Supplies are things you use up, such as food, refreshment, gasoline, masking tape, tarps, supplies, garbage bags. What are you going to do with all the garbage that you may have?
Well, where we do meetings, there's a giant, there's a dumpster there where anyone can use it. So that's probably, we're just going to drive over there and just throw it out there.
Is there a section in here that should have that, you think?
I mean, if you bring it up, probably.
Aiden, I don't know if you realize this, but the Maple Road PTO president was sitting right behind you. So you might want to hit her up after this.
Just one, when do you plan on starting?
I'm, well, one thing I have to do is get it approved by the actual scouting organization. But once, that takes like one or two weeks. Once that's done, I plan on starting probably late this month, early next month, because I need to get this done by March 31st, or else it's over.
Oh, okay. I hope you have a good timeline. Then you're going to be busy.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And all? Tickets?
Make sure they're listed on here. Go to the North Castle, Yale's report. Okay. How many other bare baskets do you need?
I just need two more. Family Life, I'm actually going to get that done this weekend on Saturday. And then I need, what is it? Stay in the Community, which I'm getting done like next month.
This week, Community?
Yeah.
Stay here and watch the board meeting. Or go online and watch some of it.
I already had it basically done. Obviously, I have two requirements.
Well, good luck with it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're good.
You're good.
Thank you all so much.
We have no student representative with us this evening. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari. Mr. Novak, Director of Education, report.
Aiden, great job. I usually take the grillings around here. So you did a fantastic job. So I have a fun announcement that is not currently on the agenda. We received information this week, or I'm sorry, last week, that our high school computer science class received an award called the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. The statement reads, "Congratulations. The West Milford Township High School has earned the College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for expanding young women's access to AP Computer Science. Research shows that female students who take AP Computer Science are more likely to major in computer science in college compared with matched peers. Through your leadership in diversifying computer science education, you're preparing female students for the in-demand jobs of the future and giving them the opportunity to help solve some of society's most challenging problems. The West Milford High School was one of 225 schools nationwide to be honored in this capacity." I'd like to say a big thank you, especially to our high school computer science teachers, Anne Noe Chanza, who I always pronounce that name differently. The students know her as Mrs. N, and Kelly Downs. They teach our courses, AP Computer Science and AP Computer Science Principles. And I'm sure it's the strong female leadership in our department that helps push us forward and get this award. So congratulations to our high school, our math department, and, you know, our students who are participating in these courses.
Can I just ask one question? Will there be something given to the two teachers that you're talking about?
So there is an official award document that is coming to the school. So the school will be awarded. But we also received, with an award like this, you get an official PDF.
Graphic.
There's a graphic that is copyrighted graphic that we can place, our teachers could place it on their, you know, on their profiles or, you know, on their, you know, and you go to our website and you can click on the teacher. They'll be, they'll have rights to that. So they'll get access to that copyrighted insignia. And the school will receive an official award that I can probably bring here when we actually have it in hand.
That would be great. And I think it would be wonderful if a letter is generated from the Board acknowledging them. And also, if it could be put on the website, maybe there are pictures on the website.
Right. And that, also with that insignia, we're allowed to claim this award and put it and post it on our social media and our website.
That's a big deal for this district out of all of this country. Okay? So I think it's really important. Thank you.
And just an update on our progress for our second iReady diagnostic, which is well underway. Students began taking the second diagnostic on January 22nd. We will be completed by February 9th. As of today, we've completed 75% of our reading diagnostics and 61% of our math diagnostics. Preliminary results have displayed substantial progress while revealing a pattern of achievement in regard to the individualized learning path. Students who are completing lessons, committing to assignments on task, are showing meaningful gains. Once the testing window has been closed, iReady will share district-level performance data with us and also with Linkit. And then Linkit will prepare the Navigator reports that we often share. And I'm anticipating that that process should be complete in time for our Education Committee in February. Also, we're still in progress on this. I've turned on the For Families report on our, on our site, which would give families the opportunity to log in through the student page, the student profile, and see the results of the diagnostic as it's complete. One of the, it's currently on. One of the problems we're having is that because we use ClassLink and we have a single sign-on process, the instructions that iReady prepared for me to share with the community says how to use the username and the password, which our kids don't use the username and the password. So I'm just waiting for clarification from iReady and how I can share that with the community. And then that'll all be shared through School Messenger. Yes?
Aiden, when does the window close for the diagnostic?
February 9th.
Thank you.
So we should be done. We afford a week for language arts, a week for math typically. Teachers aren't micromanaged as to when they fit that in. We give two weeks. You know, that's sort of how we play it out. Two weeks for the two diagnostics. We afford the third week for students who are away, who are sick, that sort of thing. So we have a makeup week. I'm anticipating that most of it will be done by the end of this week.
Did you have a question, Aiden? About the training for the staff? That's going to be happening during our...
It's February, yeah, February 20th.
Okay, that's our PD day.
Yeah, we have a, we have a two-hour training with our administrative team on February 5th. iReady's coming in to work with our admin team on how to view reports and all the things that go along with that to take a look at the data from one diagnostic to the next, how to manage the individualized learning path. And then on February 20th, our staff will be trained as well, so.
And will they be doing like grade-level training? Is that like broken down?
They're going to do two trainings. They're going to come, they'll work with, we'll actually bring four trainers. Sorry. Two trainers, four sessions. So I'll do, while K-2 are being trained, middle school ELA will be trained. And then when 3-5 are being trained, middle school math will be trained. So it's a little process throughout the day. So everyone will get a two-hour training.
So this will help the staff to be able to now disseminate this information, right? So that we're moving forward with the goal of this?
Yeah. The goal of this training is for our staff to take a look at diagnostic, our beginning-of-year diagnostic and the most recent diagnostic and see how our students grew. And then also be able to, you know, take a look at the results and compare that to, like I just read, you know, the results that we're seeing preliminarily is that if those students completed the work that was assigned between the diagnostics that we're seeing, we are seeing significant improvement.
So then the Board is going to see the trend of where our weak areas?
And the one piece that I'm excited for when we use Linkit, what Linkit should be able to do with iReady is compare Linkit results to what predictive data we have for how they should be performing on NJSLA. So that's what we should be getting from our Linkit Navigator report that I'm...
So we're going to be able to get some of the information, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Special reports on correspondence. Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, we had a busy month, a lot of meetings. December 19th, I have the minutes for the workshop and regular meeting and also executive session, the minutes for the January 2nd, 2024 reorg meeting, the January 20th, 2024 special meeting minutes, and also the executive session meeting minutes for January 20th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to set the minute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, the President's report. I'm just going to give a quick update on the Superintendent's Search Committee. I know there was a question last week from a trustee in regards to the community involvement. So I just wanted to update that I did speak with Ms. Hallowa. And she wanted me to say that everything is being posted on the West Milford website, so WMTPS.org. If you go to that website and you click on Board of Education, there's another dropdown from there for the Superintendent's search and all updates for any meetings. And reports are on there. You can actually access the report that was given to the Board showing how many candidates were applied and what positions they held. So, and that's accessible through the website. And then if anybody ever has any questions, you can always reach out to Ms. Hallowa. But the community involvement at this point ended with the input sessions and that she did both online and in person. Of course, we're doing first round of interviews this week. We have second round of interviews the week of February 12th. Then we'll have a final round. Hopefully, we'll find a candidate that we'll be able to put forth to the Board. And once that person is on an agenda, the community is welcome to come out and speak at a board meeting. And if you want to speak before then and, you know, you have anything you want to say, you can always come out to any of the meetings and speak on the second public comments, which is something that's not on the agenda. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. And then that would end my report. So we will go into public comments. So all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mr. Schultz, did anyone sign up to speak?
No, there wasn't.
Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Move to those public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Fenari, are there any corrections to the agenda?
There are no corrections. However, there are two hand-carrying sheets, one under Education and one under Operations and Finance.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Dwyer, Education.
Okay, I'd like to move I-1 through 6 for Education.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. Mrs. Romeo brought something to my attention that I'm curious about. And that's number four. I also checked committee meeting minutes, and I didn't see anything about this. Can you explain that, Dr. Fenari?
Could I say something prior to that? Would you mind?
No, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table number four until after we have a committee meeting to discuss it, because it's not in committee meetings. It was not on last month's. And I feel like it needs some committee meeting time. So I'd like to ask to table it. I'm making a motion to table it.
And just to be clear, you'd like to table it from this meeting altogether, not for after exec? You don't want to talk about it in exec?
That needs some committee meeting discussion.
Okay.
That's my request, yes.
And is that something we can do? It's not going to affect?
I just wanted to just double check with Dr. Ressa about the schools.
The schools, this is regarding an organization that's providing social skill groups at no cost to the district. Schools that would like to participate would have these, or this organization would be board approved to come help facilitate those groups by tabling it and waiting to another agenda would just mean that the schools in question that would like to have this organization come in would have to wait until after the approval of the board. So I would have to communicate that to the staff and to the administration about that.
I think the concern was not so, because it is a great idea, but I think the concern was that we didn't know anything about it until now. And we should have had this for our last education.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Did you still want to know a little?
That's not my concerns. I'd like to discuss my concerns in committee. And I don't think that it would be appropriate for me to share them here, so I'm asking if it could be tabled. I think that that would be best for everyone.
Okay. Okay. So I need a motion. And vote, just a voice vote or a roll call? A roll call vote on the motion to table motion number four under education.
Okay. Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Okay, so number four passed. So back to discussion on one through six without number four. Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve hand carry items number seven and eight.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Romeo?
Yeah, can we talk about number seven specifically where Northern Regional is, like, are they in our buildings? What exactly is this grant for? Like, what are they doing?
Yes, so regarding number seven, Northern Regional Educational Service Commission provides us with social workers that help support the programs that we have in our district, including our ERI programs and the special education program. And so we've been fortunate through having their support this year to help support our programs. We've had a social worker from that program providing services at the beginning of the year. And fortunately, due to a expansion of the grant funding, we're able to provide additional services for these programs. And having the Educational Services Commission provide us another day of services through the social workers that provide, again, counseling, social emotional support, group therapy for our students in these programs. So we're very excited to be able to have this additional funding through the grants that are provided to us and add an additional day of services to the additional three days that we have.
That was going to be my next question. Thank you, Dr. Ressa. So three days.
Correct.
Now, this is adding one more day, so it's one employee.
So it's one person who's giving three days, we'll now move to four days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Van Dyke? I'd just like to say thank you because we need all the support we can get, and this is wonderful that you were able to do that. So thank you.
Well, I want to also acknowledge and appreciate the support of the district administration and Mr. Schultz as well for working with him and getting the grant funds together to be able to do this, minimal to no cost to the district.
We need that support, and I'm glad that you're doing it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have one other question. The mental health grant, I mean, is that money that we, that could be used to hire someone also, or it's just not, it's just for services, like through commissions?
Yeah. Well, I'll jump in. So typically, when we have grant funding, especially if it's a grant that is going to go away after a period of time, we try not to hire permanent staff through that because it becomes difficult to ensure that in future years when that grant funding is gone, that we would be able to continue those services. So this is part of that, the Esser grant, and I know Mr. Novak manages this grant along with Mr. Schultz. So, you know, they have, they've been very particular and careful about considering things that we know are items that are not going to be permanent staff, and then we would end up cutting staff because we don't have the funding. So having somebody from the commission come in to provide those services was really the best use of those funds.
Yeah, the total mental health grant was 45,000, so if this is, if it goes over the 45, then we'll subsidize it with the normal operating budget.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 31 under personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Recuse number 24, yes, on everything else.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippi.
I'd move Operations and Finance as number one with number two.
I think one, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes, and a thank you.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, and I wanted to say thank you, too. That's very generous. I'm sorry I missed that thing.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
I'd like to move number two.
Nobody wants to pay less.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Recuse. You worked.
Mrs. Markward?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. I don't believe, I don't, I don't think recuse is the right way to go. That's why I chose abstention. I think recusing is if the person that you, that your thing is, if the person that you can't vote, because why you can't vote is on the motion, I would recuse myself. But I think the payroll is a contractual thing. I think we've had this discussion with our attorney before, and although it's new, I still feel that an abstention is.
All right, Mr. Schultz, kitchen, please change my payroll to abstain. The first one.
You don't have to, but I just.
I mean, I thought that's what I learned in trading last week. I'm only, I.
You don't have to change.
I might. But there was no trade discussion. You move on.
Okay. Mr. Lippi? Let's continue with our motions.
Okay. I'd like to move motions under Operations and Finance, number three to number six.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, Operations and Finance on hand carry number two, I'd like to move number seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, policy, Mr. Seidowitz.
I move resolution one under policy.
Second.
Any discussion?
Me.
Yes, Mr. Romeo?
Me, 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 me. Two things that I have. The first is I would like the committee to consider adding a liaison for the H E F, the Highlander Education Foundation. I think that would be nice to have the updates, just an idea. And the second thing I want to say is that I thought a lot about my comments two meetings ago about a special education committee. However, I would never call it that. It really should be called a support services committee, aside from the education committee, where all support services are presented to the board, not just child study team matters, not just special education matters, but matters of our health, nurses, all support services. I do have quite a bit of research that I've done. I didn't print it, but I can before the next policy committee meeting, if you guys would like to see. I did discuss it with Claire, went through each district, and literally, you can do the same research that I did. I Googled Board of Ed committees in the state of New Jersey and went through over 60 districts to see who has a special education committee and who does not. The first two that come up are New Jersey school boards has a special education committee called that. The second one that comes up is the state of New Jersey, our government, out of the commissioner's office. They have a special education committee. However, most Board of Educations call it something different. It's not called, some do have special education committee, but not many. So I did look it up. I spent quite a bit of time. If anyone's interested, I can share that with you, or you can look it up yourself. But I do think, I still think that it would be important to move those topics to a different meeting. So hopefully, that'll be discussed in policy and also in liaison. Those are my two things. Thank you.
I would move to put both on to the policy agenda for committees next month so we can discuss the liaison for the H E C. I know that's been discussed in the past here, right? I feel like we've said here at meetings in the past that you.
I know I didn't talk about it. Like, it might have been talked about, but I went to their first meeting and thought, oh, I'm glad I'm here. Someone should be reporting back to the board what is discussed here. It's just like our other meetings, but this one's specifically looking for grants for our school, so we should know what they're, you know, what's happening there. The first meeting, by the way, was very brief.
Yes, Mr. Seidowitz?
So this, the policy that we're voting on now and the change is really a structural matter because policy currently is an ad hoc committee when in fact we treat it like a standing committee. So for the purposes of the first and second reading that I'm hoping we approve and move along with, that that sticks around. In terms of changing committees, I don't know if it's more prudent to bring it up and try to hurry along with changing things versus waiting six months and experimenting with things because we can at any time have ad hoc committees, and if we find it's too cumbersome or if it's, if it's unnecessary, then we can just stop doing it as opposed to restructuring the bylaw and then saying further on down the line, well, we don't agree with what we thought two months ago. So I think that, you know, anything brought into any committee is worth discussing, but for the purposes of tonight, I just hope that we vote yes and not delay a small issue.
Well, this is for the first reading, right? So this'll come back.
But if we structurally, if we structurally change something and add committees and do all this, it's a new first reading because you changed the entire bylaw.
Well, what I'm saying is we could have the discussion in committees on what is, what was brought up tonight by Kate, by Mrs. Romeo, sorry. You know, just start the discussion of, you know, potentially adding a liaison. Not saying that we shouldn't not vote on this as it's presented tonight because it's only a first reading. So it doesn't sound like anybody has any objections to what's being presented tonight. It sounds like Mrs. Romeo would just like to have more discussions about potentially add in a liaison and a support services that she said that she has done research on and can bring. So, I mean, I feel like it should go back to committee for discussion and not be discussed in conjunction with what's being presented tonight.
So the school of thought and, you know, Mr. Seidowitz, I know you, you as I, you know, we're students of policy. And so the reason that we do have first and second readings is because of something exactly like this. You know, we have a first reading, the board has the opportunity to hear what the committee is recommending, and often in those discussions, new things arise. So, you know, even if we went to second reading for this individual policy change, moving the policy committee to the correct section of the bylaw, it doesn't mean that at a future meeting, we couldn't have another first reading on the policy should the board feel as though it needs to change. So I think we're safe if we consider the policy for first reading as we're presenting it this evening and then see where that discussion brings us in the future. So I hope that kind of, it doesn't close the door on the discussion is what I'm saying.
I think what we have here is we have two different discussions going on. One is the policy as we're reading it.
Right.
And the second one, which is a completely different discussion, is for other policy changes down the road, correct?
Exactly.
Right. So we're voting on the policy as it was written first time with the first reading.
Correct.
Yes, which is why I suggested putting it on committee for next month with the two new points that Mrs. Romeo brought up.
Well, and to be fair, it's not, one of them's not a new, I guess they're both not new points. And I was kind of disappointed, I will say, in the policy notes from committee because this was brought up, discussed quite a bit, discussed at CPAC meeting, but not in the notes from committee meeting.
It wasn't on the agenda for the committee meetings.
Oh, okay.
So the only thing that was discussed was changing what is being presented tonight, which is the policy.
Okay.
Going on to, nothing else was discussed in committees. As with anything on the committees, we all have the option to email the chairperson and Lydia and ask for something to be added to the agenda. So if it's something, if it's an item that you would like to have added, it really is two separate discussions, just like Peter said. I think you have the option of bringing it, you know, emailing Will and asking him to put it on his committee, okay?
I have to email you after this and ask you to put this on, or Claire's asking, because I thought I asked this at the last meeting, but if that's how we're going to do things moving forward, I'll start emailing everybody. But when I say something publicly and then we have a huge discussion about it, it's my assumption then that it would be discussed, you know? So I really did think it would be discussed in committee as it was quite a discussion, right?
To be added, that's the whole.
Yeah.
The reflection.
Yes, Mr. Seidowitz.
Really, the reflection from last meeting was there were a lot of thoughts about how to change how we see our committees in adding and taking away and renaming. And by the end of it, I gathered that we were experimenting. So if we have a new ad hoc committee, then let's do it. Let's add a new ad hoc committee and see where that goes instead of trying to alter a bylaw. I think we could start as early as next meeting, next regular meeting, to have a new ad hoc committee that reports and discusses and deliberates.
So I was under the impression that I guess what we would do would, instead of splitting, which was, you know, the big discussion, change in the night to a different night to give more time for the committee, for the education committee, so that we would have enough time to be able to discuss both education and special education without being hones to an end time when the next committee started. I thought that was what we were going to try first and see if that would give us the opportunity to be able to have discussions with no time limit because the, you know, education is first. And although it is 90 minutes, sometimes it can be a pretty long committee with a lot of discussion, and we do tend to be rushed at the end. We do have to end at a certain time, at that 90 minutes, because we have four committee meetings that night. So to make it fair to the other committee members, we do pretty much try and hold to the time that we, you know, end and start the next committee and they do roll over into each. So I I was under the impression that that was what we were going to try first. Any? Yes, Mr. Lippi?
Kate, please, excuse me, Mrs. Romeo. Please, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're not talking about moving the special education out of education. You're talking about setting up a different, whether it be ad hoc or permanent committee or something like that, to speak about special services district-wide, right? Keeping education in education.
Yeah, education includes every single student in the whole district. And special services would include the, or support services or whatever we would call it other, would include every single student in the district. Because you would be talking about all these things on the agenda that have to do with mental health, all the programs, this, you know, all kinds of different things, you know, the guidance department, the nursing department, the school counselors, you know, and it would also encompass special, you know, CST, yeah.
So again, I
None of those things ever get discussed in committee because we never have time.
So again, I think it would be pertinent to add it to the policy agenda for next month so that we could discuss more what that would entail and what other districts are doing.
I I guess my misunderstanding here is what would the policy committee accomplish by having it on their committee when you're trying to accomplish the discussion of the special services? Wouldn't you try to do that in education and essentially splitting that meeting while you're in it?
This is where, I think this, so I, I'm not aware of the support services. We have discussed it. I don't really know what it encompasses, so maybe looking into it more and discussing it in committee of what that encompasses, what a support services committee would encompass, I think would maybe be pertinent to see if that's something we would want to move forward. I mean, I really don't know what, you know, services would be included in that and what other districts do.
So
And that doesn't mean to say that we should do it as a, as a district, obviously, but I think doing the research to see and discussing it.
But wouldn't you want to try to practice that in what you're trying to accomplish? Why wouldn't you do that in education? Because we're just, we're going to talk about it in policy and we're going to say, that's a great idea. Education, why don't you do it?
Yeah, no, I completely agree. I thought moving education to another night, I assumed would be the first step to see. And then this is, you know, the shared services, yes, Kate has brought it up. We had a discussion after the last meeting about the
Quite honestly, if we had had a meeting, maybe things like what I tabled tonight, number four, could have been discussed. My questions on number seven, like, there's a lot of things that are not.
So in policy, all you're going to accomplish is we're going to say, well, yeah, you could do that in education or the splintered version of education. So why don't you try it out in education?
For the fourth.
For February?
This is what I'm asking you.
And report back to the policy committee how it went.
I'm not going to turn down this first reading, Will.
No, I don't think that has
I think, you know, I think this is just getting very confusing. Maybe, again, discussing in committees, what exactly is a support services committee, I think would probably be the next step. Because I think there's confusion from everyone what that is. Yes, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I guess my question is, Kate, do you want another committee created? And that would, if it is a new committee, then that would make it go to policy to see if because we have to change our policy if we add a standing committee. Is that correct?
So something like that doesn't originate in policy, and I think that's what we were just talking about, right? So if the discussion is going to happen in committee or in some other form, whether it happens out in public or it happens in individual committees, whether the board wants to move in that direction, and then it comes, it would come to policy, if that's the case, it would come to policy to make those adjustments. But making the adjustment in policy isn't going to afford us the kind of conversation that I think everybody is talking about.
So which committee would it go in? Education? It sounds like it's, it's more than education. It sounds Yeah, it sounds like it's personnel, so I
I mean, some of the items that you're talking about are talking, are discussed in each of those committees. I mean, the nurses have been discussed in personnel. They have been discussed in education, depending on what we need. I mean, you know, you'll come forward, I mean, during COVID, the nurses were a big topic of conversation in both personnel and education. So I honestly, I kind of feel like Will is exactly right. It's a matter of discussion in those committees and bringing, bringing whatever the information's forward. Maybe the lack of things winding on the agenda, maybe that can be more of a administrative thing where you're bringing more information to those committees.
Can you repeat that last part? I didn't hear you.
I think, I think it's a matter of administration, Lydia and Dan bringing forth and Derek bringing forth into the education committee the type of information that you're looking for and having it, having it reflect in the minutes better.
So one of the things that we talked about internally is making sure that as we do in personnel, for example, we go over the personnel items that we have ready by the time we have our committee meeting and doing the same kind of thing in other committees so that you're actually as committees, looking at your section of the agenda in addition to the things that we bring to committee. So I think that's something that we can easily fix.
We talked before, as chairperson and personnel, Lydia and I discuss anybody that sends something or whatever, we talk about what's on the agenda. I also feel that on some of our committees, we probably should have a, a running like update on the bottom because there's items that we don't always, we say we want to bring it back up and it's not there and it gets forgotten. So there should be, you know, I know that you do it in operations and finance. So maybe it's more of changing how our, our minutes are reflecting and the agendas are reflecting for the committee meetings.
Okay, so maybe it'll be discussion in every committee moving forward. Okay. Any other discussion on agenda item one under policy as it's written? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Recano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Sorry. Committee reports and liaisons, parks and recreation, Mrs. Dwyer?
Oh, okay. Well, I attended the meeting last month, right after our board meeting. What, what a nice group of people, really, really engaged in the community and had a lot of nice things to say about the school board, or not the school board, the school district. The township committee, the township enjoyed the lighting ceremony, the Christmas tree on December 4th. They're having a discussion on how to even make it better. They appreciated the fact that the band and concert choir played holiday music and the residents all enjoyed their hot cocoa and ice sculpting carving. I was very impressed with this. There's registration that's now open for the animal tracks program where families can discover the difference between various animal furs, tracks, trails and homes they leave behind. The tracker will bring various animal furs and be helping the participants discover the difference between different animal tracks, trails and homes. And that's on Saturday, February 17th. I thought it was interesting. I thought a lot of kids in our district might be interested in that. There is a problem with the rec basketball. There's 328 kids participating and there's 137 kids participating in travel basketball and they lack a gym. And the gym they're lacking is Westbrook. And the reason for that is because we don't have a janitor. I did tell them we were short-staffed, but I just feel bad for them. CASA is working on a pickleball tournament. It's called
Oh, in my report.
Paddle, what? Sorry. Paddles for Prevention. They're shooting for April 13th. There are, they are in the process of, this town is in the process of obtaining quotes for fencing behind the goal at Legacy Field to stop the balls from going into the woods. This we should be very appreciative of because we share that field with the township and the rec department does maintain that field for us. So we're thankful for that. There's, the township and the Board of Education had conducted interviews with four companies for the feasibility study of the Hillcrest building. A final decision was made and the company chosen was ENV. And ENV has already contacted the township with inquiries about Hillcrest and that property. Township has also hired a grant writer called Bruno Associates and right now they're helping the different departments in the township with different things. For example, there's a mutual agreement with, with, I guess Mr. Kelly made it. They're looking into Daigo's Field, into improving it with turf and lights. And that again is to our benefit. And Mrs. Lockwood, I do have to call Mr. Kotaki. I'm sorry, I forgot to do it. Okay. And finally, finally, May 11th, there will be an elk's beef steak to benefit Rec Park and Recs. That's my report.
May 11?
May 11. Can't wait for that beef steak.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Safety, Mrs. Recano and Mrs. Dwyer?
We have our first meeting of 2024 on February 22nd.
Thank you. Superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. Recano and Mrs. Van Dyke?
In our meeting last month, we talked about kindergarten registration. It opened on January 16th and there are numerous ways to register your child for kindergarten and get that information. There is a banner on the website. There's an infographic at the bottom of the website. Dr. Fornari is looking to get an announcement in the messenger and Mr. Novak also relayed the information to all of the township preschools and the Highlands Family Success Center. Something really exciting that's in the works. We're looking to put book vending machines in all of the elementary schools as a reward for children in the schools. We're still trying to work out logistics on how they'll be funded and filled. But I think it's a really cool idea and like a fun way for kids to earn prizes. And for, I've been a part of SRT since before I sat on the board and for the very first time, Dr. Fornari explained to everyone how she put, how a superintendent puts together the budget, which I thought was a great way for our stakeholders to understand that it's not arbitrary and a lot of thought is put into it. And the one thing that Dr. Fornari has been hammering home is touch the classroom last, which I think is a relief to a lot of people in the district. What else did we talk about? There was an issue with the eighth grade high school scheduling night for parents. There was very little notice. We talked about it last week. So I think, you know, these parents brought this up again as an issue. So I really think we need to look at this year-at-a-glance calendar and make sure that we are inputting all of these important dates and getting the information out timely. And we are working on a media center volunteers program called Library Lovers. Each school is going to have volunteers working in the library. They'll be fingerprinted and background checked. And we even talked about possibly having friends of the library come and do it as well. That concludes my report.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Romeo?
Two comments. One, books. Love that. I might, you might, I want to ask what happened to all the books that were boxed from Westbrook? Can they be used? Mr. Novak, they have to be paperback, right? There's like some
It is a certain size and fit that would fit and the, also the ARSTAT, like through the Westbrook books pretty, pretty carefully. I think the things that were left there were titles that they didn't think were enticing to our students. So one of the I guess main goals of this initiative is that it's, you know, it's going to build literacy. It's going to raise excitement about reading and, you know, the excitement of of winning a book through, through this literacy process. So I don't know if the, you know, the leftover books from
Okay. They won't fit into
Yeah, not even just about fitting. I don't think it's, you know, we've been trying, we've been shopping those books around to anyone who would take them and no one's taken them.
Maybe more information could be sent to the whole board on what this exactly is?
Terms of the book, the leftover books or the
No, the, the book vending.
Oh, okay. So Case, you missed it. I did put that in, not in my last update, but the update before. I gave you a little bit of an update, basically what we discussed with the SRT, but also in there, there was a link that takes you to the actual company that we're looking at for the vending machine. They're called Inchy, I believe, Mr. Novak. And so that's something that, and the idea, you know, it's a very grassroots idea grew out of one of our school's principals' budget review. He came with the idea and then it kind of spread to the potential for the, all of the elementaries. So, you know, very much an initiative that we hope will, really as Mr. Novak said, excite our students about reading and and it all grew out of our elementary stuff.
I do, yeah, no.
Another cool thing about the machines is that they can be branded. We've been talking about rebranding our district and now that all of our elementary schools are black and gold, we can start there and have the machines be black and gold UGL, black and gold Marshall Hill, black and gold Maple Road and, you know, so on, so that, you know, we can start there maybe as we, you know, delve further.
I did have an idea as we're talking about this. I was wondering if we could do like a sponsorship for, for the books, for the different schools, like if maybe there's a business in town or something that maybe would like to, you know, it's a little, it's not extremely costly, maybe it's going to be costly upfront, but in restocking the machines. But I was thinking that maybe we could get the community to buy in a little bit to help with the cost of the books for the vending machine. I mean, I see that we bought them. Or that we're, we're allocating for them.
Right, the potential
So, you know, I, I think that, you know, maybe if we get it out, there might be people who want to sponsor it. Because it's going to have to be kind of, you know.
I've seen teachers put that online. I've sponsored multiple books. I'm sure you have too, like very similar idea from our district where teachers will say, I'm giving every, this has happened in our district in the past. Teachers will post, I'm putting, I'm giving every child four books this year, one like a marking period. Would you like to sponsor a child? And then
I don't want them to lose their, their
I'm just saying, we've done that. I've seen that here.
You know, a lot of the teachers have wish lists that they have on Amazon and things like that.
My second comment was, I think about the media, the libraries. I think it'd be a really good idea also, you know, we have the Heroes and Cool Kids program and they go into the schools and our honor societies at the high school and at Macapin both get community service hours. That might be a really cool service project. Want to ask them, I mean, Want to ask them, I mean, that might be a cool service project for them to spend every Wednesday an hour in a, at the Marshall Hill Library or at the PK Library or wherever and do some of that work also. I know high school kids really like to help out at the elementary schools and that's fun for them and they need the hours anyway, so they're often looking for projects like
Thank you. New Jersey School Boards Association, oh, sorry, I skipped over myself, look at that. The Sayet County School Boards Association, that would be me. There's actually a meet in February 1st that I could not attend. It's fully virtual, not in person, and it's, the topic is special education and advocacy topics, so if anyone would like to
I plan on doing anyway.
Thank you, thank you, that would be great if someone could. New Jersey School Boards Association, Mr. Seiwitz.
Thank you. I think everybody who is new on the board has completed Governance 1, is that correct? Well, if you haven't, on Saturday, on Saturday, the 3rd of February, Governance 1 will be held in person. You can find that information online, I don't have the location available, because I assume that everybody was done, so my apologies. We know what we say about people who assume. So also on February 3rd, on the platform SWGO, is Governance 2 and Governance 4 training. So that's a virtual training. On Friday, February 23rd to Sunday, February 25th, is New Board Member Orientation Weekend, which I highly, highly, highly recommend. It's really engaging and for anybody who is a new board member, it really edifies your role on the board and teaches you things that you may or may not have known before coming into the role. And tomorrow, there is an online webinar entitled, "The Board's Role in the Annual Budget." It's at 10:00 AM, so I imagine most of us are working. However, once those webinars are done, they are available to watch at any time and I would be more than happy to share that link once the webinar is done tomorrow. That's the School Board Association Report, followed by Mr. Seiwitz with Legislative. Here I am again. So I, I think that this is a better, Legislative is kind of better known as government relations because you kind of deal with all sorts of things. You have the DOE, you have the executive offices, the legislature, just food for thought for when we do discuss changing names of committees. But on that note, on the 9th of January, the governor had his State of the State address and addressed topics such as universal pre-K, teacher shortage, increasing literacy rates, and something that I think is ridiculous, calling on the legislature to send a voting rights bill that will allow 16 and 17-year-olds the ability to vote in local school board elections. I did not garner their vote with that statement, but I stand by it. So in terms of what was passed, the legislature ended their session on January 8th and a bunch of things got passed, I'm not going to go through everything, but the big things that are going to become mandatory instruction is grief instruction is going to be required by the State Board of Education to adopt and districts to implement into the New Jersey Student Learning Standards pertaining to grief in the comprehensive health and physical education content area at its next required update of the standards. Another requirement is a FAFSA graduation requirement that requires students to complete financial aid applications as part of high school graduation. And there were quite a bit of legislative signatures for, hold on, I lost that thought. The bulk of what was passed was based on addressing the teacher shortage crisis that we are having, so kudos to that effort. And that is my legislative report. Any comments, questions, jokes?
Technology Oversight, Mr. Lipe and Mrs. McQuade.
Thank you for February 20th, we have our meeting. That's all we have, first meeting of the year.
The Township Board of Education Joint Committee.
Technology, I'm not on that, but I want to plug that parents can still pay the $25 for the laptop, what is it called? Thank you, insurance. I think that a lot of people still don't know about that. And you do agree, right?
I agree.
And so any child Okay. Our kids that have their Chromebooks, we can still pay $25 for the insurance so that if your child breaks their Chromebook, it will get fixed. If your child loses their Chromebook or breaks their Chromebook, it could cost hundreds of dollars, but if it's insured, will not. So I think that that's an important thing to know and I'm gonna plug it as many times because I am, I still haven't paid my $25. I'm doing it tomorrow.
Yeah, me either. Okay, so Township, well, it's not mandatory, you don't have to pay it, yeah, yeah.
So it's extra insurance for, you do not have to do it. And last year, we only had a handful of them under 10. I would love to know how many we have this year that have purchased it. You didn't even know that we had it?
I had a few more, I had a few more.
I do remember a notification going out, I think via Messenger.
Yeah.
Recently, yeah.
We've been discussing it more and more and it's a good idea to buy.
Yes, and I think there was a date, like, that's already passed, right? Yeah.
You can't, I did check, you can still purchase it. But you can't purchase, I'm sorry, but you can't purchase it if your kid's computer's broken today. You can't purchase the insurance and have that covered. But if you haven't bought the insurance and your kid's computer is still working perfectly today, you can't still buy it.
Is that correct?
I, I know that that's correct because if I checked with Winston on my way in, so he's waving to tell you.
Okay, I only know that a notification did, a notification did go out. So, so a notification Are we, are we finished? Sorry. So a notification did go out to the families with a link that had a date that has already passed, that expired. So if that, if we aren't being held to that, maybe another notification needs to go out saying that you can still buy.
Real update.
Township Board of Education Joint Committee, we have not had a meeting since the last time we met, so West Milford Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Van Dyke and Mrs. Jurgensen.
The West Milford Alliance met on Monday, January 8th. It was discussed the Paddles for Prevention Pickleball Tournament, which is scheduled for April 13th, Saturday, April 13th, at the West Milford Rec Center. There was a grant submitted into, for the Atlantic Health Grant for Sidekicks, which is a program that is similar to our Heroes and Cool Kids, but for the eighth grade, eighth Now, Mrs. O'Brien is working with Mrs. Garrish on the, on programs to be funded through that grant. In addition, we have, we have Sergeant Steven Herzog came on and told us about, they're going to have a junior police academy this year and that will be taking place between July 29th and August 2nd. They are just finalizing the academy as, to the grade levels and the program that they're offering. The goal is to have 30 recruits. Further details will be provided in the near future. Finally, Scott's Fun Run has been set for Sunday, May 19th. And the next meeting for the alliance is February 12th at 7:00 PM at the West Milford Library and it will be there and also on Zoom.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, Mrs. McQuade.
So CPAC met Wednesday, January 17th in the media center at the high school. There was a presentation by Community Personnel Services. CPS is a nonprofit agency providing supported employment and transition services to individuals in Bergen, Essex, Morris, Passaic, Somerset, Sussex, and Union County in New Jersey. It was very informative and the presentation will be available on the website. Dr. Reza gave updates on the rescheduled nurtured heart training, some real-time IEP updates, the ability to go back and see your archived IEPs, so he worked on that. That was brought up in the previous meeting. The ESY dates for 2024 were given, which is July 8th to August 8th, and that will be a Monday through Thursday for all programs. It's starting a little later this year so that kids aren't missing because of the Fourth of July holiday. There was follow-up discussion regarding CST protocols, sensory reading program, foreign language alternative, kindergarten inclusion model, and the inclusion of out-of-district students in activities at their homeschool, which Dr. Reza spoke about. They've already worked on a directory so that those kids could be involved at their homeschool. The hiring process is ongoing for the assistant principal at Highlander Academy, Highlander Prep. A question was asked about training for the whole staff at PK for the CLIME program and this is upcoming. The need for a future Mcapin-CLIME program was brought up, as well as an MD program at the high school for 2024, 25. Numbers for the inclusion preschool program are being looked at to see how that program can be built out. PK not having a fenced-in playground was brought up and Dr. Reza stated that this is not an issue at this time. Questions were asked regarding the Cove at the high school. Dr. Reza informed us that Pomtonian has, has non-compete rules in their contract, which prevents the Cove from selling food items at the same time as the vendor, Pomtonian, who holds the bid for the National School Lunch Program. And the next CPAC meeting is scheduled for March 13th and I believe the locations can be determined, correct?
That's correct, thank you, Ms. McQuade.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, any old business? Yes, Mrs. Dwyer?
I have whole old business because she just brought it up. Pomtonian caters, they're actually gonna stop our kids in the transition program from selling their little bagels and cookies?
It's not Pomtonian, it's a state, state lunch program, you can't compete, if you're a member of the program, you can't compete with it. And if you are selling items and off-hours, you have to sell in compliance with the Healthy Snacks Nutrition Guidelines, part of the National School Lunch Program. So if we're not following that, we risk losing all of our reimbursement and funding for the lunch program.
So now what's gonna happen to this transition program, because those kids depend on that?
So we're working often and diligently with the program, the staff, to offer other opportunities, other activities, other merchandise that students can purchase. So we're working with, again, the teacher of the program, Mr. Schultz and I, to recognize the importance of the Cove, recognize the importance of the program and what it does for our students in that, in the transition program. So we are very much committed to making sure that the opportunities that students are receiving in that program continue to the greatest extent within the confines of the, the rules that we have to operate under at this time.
If these students had sold their, whatever their snacks or food after school, would that still be a problem?
No, after school, it's no problem, as long as they're selling within the guidelines of, actually, no, not even, they could sell the other items after school, but the problem is the kids aren't in school at that point. If there was an event at the school at night, they could come back and they can, they could work it there.
They can do that.
They can do that.
So we are looking at like out of the box ideas like that to try to make, you know, give our students the opportunity to do that, participate in those activities.
Because I know that kids love it.
Oh, we, we all do, we all do.
And we're also looking into some of the items that they use the funding for, like the martial arts for the students and the yoga, incorporating that into the budget for next year and for the rest of this year moving forward, so they don't need to depend on the sales from the Cove. You still have the transition program, but not that's dependent on finances.
Mrs. McQuade, oh, sorry. I'll go to, Mrs. McQuade had a hand up for a while, so whatever, then I'll go to you.
Just having been in the high school and seeing, one of the biggest parts of that program is the, the interaction between the kids in that transition program and the students, the entire student body and the staff. And I realize that there, we have restraints legally, that there's nothing we can do about it, but I have heard from numerous people, both staff and students, how much they're missing this program. And I just want to make sure that we have a really good resolution to this, to keep these kids engaged and making the progress that this, that this allows them to make towards their transition in life and that it's made now and that not, that they're not missing anything in the meantime, because we've been part of the National School Lunch Program for a while, I believe, I don't think it's new. So I understand that maybe it was just cut now, but that is a big part of that curriculum and I just want to make sure, as I'm sure everybody does, that those kids are not losing anything because of something, some kind of government regulation.
Thank you, Mr. Lipe.
Can I comment?
Oh, I'll go to
Yeah, you go first.
Mr. Schultz, Dr. Reza, I believe we spoke at the committee meeting that we were looking at other items that would not be in competition with the food and things like that, we're talking about sports memorabilia and other avenues that a store could carry, correct?
Correct, as I mentioned earlier, I talked about merchandise and other activities, or excuse me, activities, merchandise, other items such as, you know, like school supplies and other things that can be purchased. So we are looking to, and I give a tremendous amount of credit and appreciation to the teacher of the program, Ms. Benes, who's being creative and looking at those types of things to maintain the store as a destination for our students. But I appreciate the advocacy and the support, which we all feel, and we want to try to make this program as, as good as we can under the circumstances.
Mrs. Romeo, did you want to say something?
No, Mr. Lipe said it. I, I was very upset to hear the rumors. I was very happy to hear the administration's resolve. And in committee notes, it said that the Cove program is not being considered for budget cuts and that the Cove program is being supported more fully through next year's budget. So those two things made me very happy. As an educator, I support my Cove program, it's not called that at work, I've supported them every year, I actually used to have one that was called Roadkill. But the food was delicious and I bring dinner home normally at least one night a week to support a program just like the Cove. I bring home shepherd's pies, I bring home stuffed peppers and they're delicious and I pay good money to help support the program and the students and then I have dinner. So there are a lot of other ways to do many, many, many things, breakfast program when, you know, just all different ideas and things that they could look into. But I knew that it does require probably some change and that is the part that is difficult. But hearing that it is not cut, that the students will be supported more in the budget and that their programs will all run is really, really important.
Right, it was
I want to say thank you.
Yeah, just want to be clear, it was never a conversation that we're gonna cut it out of the budget or
That's right.
We're just making the necessary changes to it and, and amending the program moving forward with Dr. Reza.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any other whole business?
Move to close, whole business.
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seeing as none, I'd like to close, new business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participation, no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone signed up for the second of the comments?
No, there's not.
Would anyone like to speak? Okay.
No. I think I'm loud enough. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on the matter of splitting the Education Committee. As a mother of two children in the district, one in special education and one in general education, and also as an educator myself, I know how important appropriate inclusion is for all of our children. I also know for a fact that this suggestion was not made in any way to limit the amount of inclusion in our district, but to give special education more time to be discussed, and I appreciate the thought behind that suggestion. That being said, my concern is both the perception that separating the committees causes, no matter what name you put on the committee, and also the precedent that it sets in motion. I am concerned that having two committees would mean the possibility of having different board members sit on those committees, and that there would be so much information kind of being lost in the shuffle, that maybe that information might come back to the whole board not as clear in their original intention. I would feel more comfortable with the original idea of moving it to one separate night as a whole education committee to seeing if that would work. Special education is education and should be treated as such. What benefits the special education population benefits the school and the community as a whole. Our children, no matter their ability, need to learn to work together. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, about 21.3% of the disabled population was employed in our country as of 2022. This had increased from 19% in 2021, and this number is expected to continue to increase. All of this starts in our school, and these conversations all start in your committee meetings. I would hope that as a board, you would see the importance of education being education, no matter the ability of the child. Please pick a different night, that's fine, but don't separate my kids. Thank you. And by the way, Caitlin Babcock, 13 Post Place, sorry, I forgot. I was excited.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, come forward.
In relation to separating the Education Committee into General and Special Education or General and Special Services, it was stated tonight that 60 school districts in New Jersey have divided committees. While that does sound like a big number, I wanted to share that there are 593 operating school districts, 85 charter schools, three Renaissance schools, and 16 non-operating school districts, for a total of 697 local education agencies. Therefore, approximately 9.9% have separate committees. The remaining 90% do not. And my question is, how can you guarantee that the committee will not end up being more special education than truly special services as discussed? No matter what the title is, it can happen. As stated previously, you can Google any of these statistics, they are readily available online. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you state your name? I know you said your address, but did you...
I did. Courtney Weiss-Cromack.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none.
Move to close, public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is it possible that we could take the clipboard that's on there and put it on a separate table, so we don't have that awkward moment where there's someone and there's another person walking towards them? Just a thought for the future, and as I said, it was an inquiry.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so we have no need for an executive session? So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, motion, a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?